This is the Greenfield Public Schools Budget and Finance Subcommittee Meeting, January 22nd, 2024. And I will call the meeting to order at 12:01 and take a roll call. Martini, I am present. And, uh, member Denise?
Present.
Okay, and member Childs is not here yet. Let me join us at some point. Okay, so we have only one item on the agenda for today, which is just an update on the FY25 budget development. So, Andy and Christine, I'll let you take it away.
So, at this point, um, we've done all of the meetings with all the department heads. I will say, I'll let Andy and Karen interject, but, um, there's really nothing, like, earth-shattering that, you know, there's no huge requests of things that I recall. Some lines are up a little, some lines are down a little, you know, it's, it's nothing I don't think that you wouldn't sort of expect. We do have some, um, some staff that I will review with you, um, suggestions or desires that I have to add to FY25, which I can talk about briefly. Um, so as I talked about two school committees ago, uh, because of, um, costs associated with subbing and overtime, we have posted the, um, float custodian position again. But that's, you know, that's happening now. Last year, we had an IT position that was funded out of ESR 2 that we let go. Um, you know, we didn't continue the position into ESR 3, um, or into the local for this year. I'm, I'm, at this point, I am proposing adding a IT, um, staff person. I'll be honest, when we look at the full budget request, I may or may not, um, change that plan. But as of right now, I have tentatively put it into the budget. Um, there are projects happening, and with our ESR 3 money, we expect to be adding technology. So, the fact that we're a person down, um, may impact our ability to get all of the new technology up and going. So, that is a potential. And, I'm looking, um, new, we have a special education IA that, um, is needed for an IEP that has been added to the budget.
I'm just gonna interject one second to say, uh, member Childs has joined us.
Yes, I, I noted the time of her arrival, for the, for the minutes. I'm just scanning down my staff list. Um, we have another IA that is, um, would be a new one-to-one. So, a couple of IA vacancies, um, due to individual student needs, and then potentially adding the, um, custodial float back into the budget and, um, the IT position. That's what I have. I don't know Karen or Andy if you remember. Oh, and Glenn, it's right at the top, I forgot. Glenn had asked, um, if we could potentially budget for a school committee, secretary, more in terms of assisting with, um, budget, uh, subcommittee meeting minutes and things along those lines. And we already are posting for that HR, um, support person to do the FMLA and, uh, workers comp that I talked to the school committee about in December. Um, so we're, we're somewhat looking at combining those so that we potentially actually get somebody to take the job as a full-time position. Um, and them being on, um, you know, in the district full-time allows a lot of flexibility in terms of their ability to access the minute, you know, the meetings, and I know that you can take minutes from a recording, but, um, it just allows them to be more of a participant in the process. So, those are, those are the only potential new, with the exception of, um, I know that the committee wants to talk somewhat about the music program.
So, that's five full-time positions as I'm counting, is that correct?
Seems right. For now, I think you folks, Kate, you most certainly know, and just for Elizabeth and Anne, special education changes minute to minute. So, I put an asterisk always near the IA, um, near the IAs, so.
Right. Where are we, um, at right now with the staffing of IA positions? Uh, I know the committee, um, only very recently approved the, um, requested increase, so there probably hasn't been time to have really an impact on hiring, but how is it going?
For IAs?
Yes, and, and substitutes.
We, we have some substitutes, you know, um, the problem is, we have more absences on a daily basis than, you know, I think any district would have subs. And we do still have some vacancies. I would estimate, if I think quickly, six, seven, potentially. We do use staffing that we already have to cover. You know, this is the time of year for student absences, so at times there are students who, PVA's, who are out, therefore, we're able to move staffing around. But, um, you know, we do still have some vacancies. We have professional vacancies, like our psychologists, VCBAs, um, that have continued to be, continued to be vacant. Um, they were last year, they still, although I am, we are in process of making an offer to a school psychologist. So, hopeful that they will take the position. But, you know, a lot of the professional positions that we have opened have been open for more than a school year.
Okay. Um, the float custodian, that was, um, correct me if I'm wrong, I remember talking about it, um, in December. Uh, has it been posted for a little bit now?
I believe we posted it the day after the meeting, or two days after. It was posted pretty quickly.
Okay, so far no takers, though, huh?
I'm not aware that it has been filled, I haven't seen a hiring, um, hiring recommendation to this point for it. I'm actually looking to see if we have any applicants. That's one of our biggest challenges, is we're not, there's, there's not a lot of applicants for the positions that are posted.
Are we still in the same position of, um, paying out quite a bit of overtime in order to?
Um, so the, the positive, we have a couple applicants for the custodian, those are very recent. Um, so I can check in with Mike about how that's going. Um, no, he's, he's, you know, Mike's, um, making some changes internally with practice that he's hoping will positively impact the overtime. You know, there's always a trade-off, if you reduce the amount of overtime, then, um, you know, he's prioritizing areas of buildings to be cleaned, which isn't, um, that's nothing that is out of the norm with, any district where I've ever worked, there, there are the needs at times to prioritize. If you have a special project, if you've got, um, you know, a spill, or, or graffiti, or something that's out of the ordinary that needs to be tended to, then sometimes you need to prioritize what our staff is doing during their normal shift. But that's not an atypical, uh, decision-making process for facilities directors. But, positive, we do have a couple of applicants, so that's nice. I don't know what experience they have, or, you know, the potential of them being hired, but we have a couple folks in there.
Okay. Uh, and you mentioned the music department, uh, do you have specific, um, plans in regards to the upcoming budget related to that?
No, um, so there's a couple things, I guess. One thing I would just say for the committee is that when we talk about the investment the district makes into our music program, um, you know, it was very clear last year that the desire of the committee was to continue to financially support Strings for Kids, which, you know, is, is fine, um, but I, I think the committee, you know, should know that for this upcoming school year, that's about a $25,000 investment out of the school budget toward music for the students of Greenfield. We have two full-time music teachers at the elementary, and then you probably know, we split a music teacher, middle school, high school. I had asked for the numbers, um, of students who chose music electives a couple years ago, um, at the high school, but we don't have them yet. Uh, just a reminder, that year, Maria Scatara, of her own choice, moved from being a music teacher at the middle school to being a math teacher, and we weren't able to find a replacement for her. And then as we looked at the students who had chosen music electives at the high school, the numbers were quite low. So, we made the decision to consolidate. So, we can add a music teacher. Um, you know, we thought a little bit about adding, um, we can add instruments back to the elementary. That was very well participated in when we had the music teacher at the elementary. The only challenge is, there is potential one of our current employees would want to shift, as, I don't know that, but that person was the instrumental music teacher prior. But if that configuration does occur, and we add the music, you know, the instrument teacher back at the elementary school, we've had a hard time finding music teachers. So if we don't get a general music teacher at the elementary level, then we could run the risk of having instrumental music, and then a vacancy in the general music, which we have to provide because that's one of the specials, and that provides the contractually required preps for our classroom teachers. So we have to have a body in that space. Um, so we could do that. We could have a full-time teacher at the middle school and a full-time teacher at the high school. But at this point, we've done the course selections for next school year at the high school. Um, if the committee wanted to put a full-time music teacher at the high school, the guidance department would have to rerun course selections for grades eight through, you know, upcoming eight through upcoming 12. Um, and then we would have to see if we've got sufficient students choosing a sufficient number of music electives to run a full-time schedule. Um, we generally don't look to run a class if we have less than 10. Um, you know, some AP classes could be an exception. Uh, special education, of course, we run, we run as needed, but, you know, that, that would be a gamble to find out whether or not we've got enough students who wanted the music electives at the high school to run a full schedule. At the middle school, we could do, if we had a full-time person, we could do general music or band. We can't do both because of scheduling con, um, constraints. We could do one or the other. So those are sort of the choices that I think, um, you know, the committee could consider, if that is something you want to do for this upcoming year. Or do you want to consider adding music electives for the following year so that they can be built into the course selection process? But, those are just my thoughts.
I, I've asked a bunch of questions in a row, so I want to make sure to give room to, Anne and Elizabeth, do you have, um, questions or discussion?
Um, I'm sorry, forgive me, I'm, I'm sick in my basement. Um, actually, I don't know, as I have so much a question, but I have a lot of concern about the music program and the arts program in general. Um, our mission statement doesn't describe our district as being, you know, concentrated on sports, but that seems to be where we put a lot of our passion. So I'd like to see a more, I'd like to see art have a more equal footing with sports, and I know that the bands in middle school that Ms. Scatara did, that program was a rousing success with a lot of support from parents and a lot of support from kids. So if kids aren't signing up for the band electives, or if there aren't enough children interested, there's a reason why, and it's probably because Ms. Scatara's not doing it, but, um, we need to find something similar to get their interest alive because the passion for the arts is there, but we maybe are not tending that fire the way that we need to. And so I'd like to make sure that we have all of our arts and our sports, all of those special activities should be equal because not all the kids want to play the sports, and they're not getting what they need in the, uh, arts end of things. So I'm hoping we can get maybe a little deeper into how we're gonna fund the music and the art, and how it's gonna come about, and what we need to, uh, get it on par with the other things that we offer.
So, question for clarification, what does it, what do you think is missing for arts? I mean, if you folks want to fund more art, just, you should tell me where you think that would go in, in the district, and, you know, you can, you can certainly add funding into the budget for art.
I think it would be really helpful to have a, a table where we have currently what we have available, um, just for art and music, and also sports, any sort of extracurricular items like that, and have a data sheet so that we know where it's on offer everywhere, because it's kind of complicated to wrap your head around it, because we're not, like, in the buildings with you, so we don't know. But, um, it's hard for me to remember what we have at elementary versus middle school, and why it can't cross over in certain ways because of scheduling conflicts or it, things like that. So it'd be great if we had a sort of a, uh, just an easy write-up so that we knew where we stood with each of these things, so that we could see, um, maybe what we're missing, or what we could add. Um, it's hard to come up with really concrete ideas because it seems like there's a lot going on, like you have a lot on your plate with that, and the schedule of it, and the different buildings. So, I wonder if that's something you could, in your, with all your extra time.
I can, I can, I just want to make sure I'm understanding what you're asking for. Um, you want to know where art is available in the district?
Right, right. What kind of art, where, what building, like, and, you know, have you had to cut it because of a lack of interest, or has there been a lot of interest, and then we stopped? Or any of those things, any pertinent data points?
So, I, I can write it up, but I can also tell you fairly quickly, all of our buildings have art. Um, all of our students access art all the way through middle school, it's one of the electives that's provided, and the high school actually has two full-time art teachers. So, um, and the high school offers a pretty nice variety of art electives, in my opinion. So, um, you know, one of the challenges in adding art is it does complicate the schedule. Like, if we were to add an art teacher at the elementary, just for the sake of, of, you know, an example, um, that, I don't know when students would access art as a second elective during the day. Um, without taking away from English Language Arts time, math time, Science and Social Studies, lunch, recess, um, we have to offer PE. So that is not something that we can, you know, to skip, so.
Maybe I can rephrase this, if I'm a parent, and I want, I'm planning on taking my kid to GPS, I want to know what art is available for my child, how would I find out? Like, where would the list be on the website to see what kind of disciplines are taught, and at what grade level? I guess is what I would need, because as a parent, I would want to know, like, my kid is a stellar sculptor, and they need to, like, have that as part of their adventure, I need to know where it is. Do you know what I mean? Like, where's, where's that list? And then is there a Google survey possibility for parents to, um, get in there and say what they would like to see, or, uh, different artistic disciplines or music disciplines that they'd like to see happen? And be available as a feedback generating tool?
The list of where art is, is in the high school's course, uh, program of study, because that's where they get choices. At the elementary and the middle school, they are, students are signed up to take art, so.
Okay, so is there a place on the website where we can see how that's broken down?
Probably not, I don't know. I mean, like I said, at the high school, they have the program of study, but at the elementary and middle school, it's, it's just an elective, so, um, I don't know.
I just want to.
It's on the website.
I want, I want to re-center a little bit, uh, because, uh, I am definitely interested in, um, discussing longer-range planning and communication about arts in general in the district, but, um, we are here to talk about the FY25 budget, so, um, and I also would like to, um, just discuss music, um, a little bit more specifically because I have had, um, quite a bit of constituent communication specifically about the music program. Um, not that folks are not interested in, um, other types of arts programming in the district, but I've just had a lot of email about, uh, particularly the music program. So, um, based on what you were, um, saying, Christine, about, um, possibilities, it sounds like the most immediate thing that might be available would be to make a posting for, um, offering instrumental music at the elementary level. And if you post, are you able to post and see if you get applicants and who applies, and then you decide whether or not to actually fill that position?
Yeah, actually, we do have, um, a process by which we, we consider it, um, an anticipated opening. So we can post with a start date of next school year, anticipated opening, and then, um, see what types, what type of interest we get. And then I can certainly share out with the committee that, you know, we had, we had wonderful candidates that are, um, qualified for the position, so we're gonna interview, or I can say we didn't have any applicants, and so this would create sort of a wrinkle in, in the big picture. Yeah, we can definitely do that.
Okay. Uh, would that require any particular action or direction, um, from the committee? Or you can just do?
I think both, I think I can do it, but I feel like if the subcommittee has an interest in that, I can do it, uh, at the request of a subcommittee.
Thank you for being patient with me. Subcommittee chair thing before. Uh, all right, so, uh, so I will make a motion then. I move that, uh, position be posted for, uh, elementary instrumental music instruction. Is that adequate as a motion?
For me.
Would anyone second that?
I second that.
Okay. And any discussion on this?
I'm sorry, can you read the motion again?
The motion is that a position be posted for elementary instrumental music instruction.
Uh, okay.
Anticipate.
I'm in agreement.
I'm sorry, say that again, Christine?
Anticipated opening?
And, okay, uh, all right, a position be posted for an anticipated opening for elementary instrumental music instruction. Is that correct wording? Thank you. Anne, do you want to just re-second that, just?
Okay, I will second that again.
Bureaucracy, okay, thank you. Uh, any, any discussion about this, this particular motion? All right, let's move to a vote. Uh, I am a yes. Member Childs? We cannot hear you for now.
But you heard me.
There we go.
Okay, yes.
You're back. Okay, thank you. Uh, and member Denise?
Yes.
Secretary. Okay, thank you. Uh, that motion carries. All right, uh, is there further discussion, um, in regards to the topic of music? I would just say that I would like to continue the discussion about how to, um, continue to enhance and promote the music program going forward, um, in which we will then be really talking about FY26, I think. Um, but that's definitely something I think we'll probably continue to hear more about, um, as a committee, and, and should address as a, as a full committee. Uh, Christine, was there anything, um, additional that we should know about the, um, FY25 budget development at this point?
Um, I think the biggest pieces are that, um, at the February meeting, we'll be bringing the bus contract for the committee to vote on, um, the process that's required because we were part of a group bid for a five-year contract. Is the city council had to vote to approve that we go out to bid for a five-year, and then they just voted to approve the resulting contract, so now it goes to school committee. Um, the increase in transportation, um, was about 11%, which Andy has shared is not atypical at this stage of the game. Um, Andy, do you happen to know the impact on the all-funds for that transportation bid? Or did we not do the math that, that far yet?
Well, I mean, it's, it's an 11%, so, um, as far as the impact on the all-funds, since we're building the budget, it's just gonna be part of our bottom-line cost proposal. Um, just so everybody, as far as, I'm gonna say, I know it's a concerning amount, but the last contract was a fixed price for a good chunk of it, so, um, the vendor did actually last fiscal year reach out to see if the member districts were willing to potentially engage in, uh, increasing the contract this past year. Obviously, we said no, um, so, uh, uh, this is just, I'm gonna say, the unfortunate nature of doing business when it comes to, uh, bidding and transportation. bidding and transportation. I can tell you in our other clients, the eleven percent is about the average of what we've seen across the board. So, um, again, I'll say quote unquote, not ideal, but you know, the thing about is that we do have the funds both in our, as we're building the budget, but also we do have the transportation revolving account that we use to offset the, the transportation costs as well. So. Yes, there's always only one vendor. And our recommendation is going to be to accept and approve.
Any questions in regards to transportation? I have a question about a different topic, but I don't want to move on from transportation if anybody has anything. Member Childs?
So for this transportation, does, are we planning on adding or cutting any bus routes?
Don't know yet.
Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Um, there's a couple pieces. Um, we are doing a little bit of work around, I will be talking with the committee at some point about the, um, busing policy to propose options if the committee wants to entertain them or not, um, which could have an impact on bus routes. So I'll be doing that, you know, I would say no later than March, hoping for February, but no later than March. And then we'll have to have, um, the vendor run our bus routes for next year, but it's generally, um, I expect will be about the same, um, as what we are now.
Other questions or comments about transportation?
I wanted to ask about, um, any positions or other changes in relation to going to full-year science and social studies at the middle school. Uh, because that was something that had come up when we were, um, discussing uh, redistricting and, um, I just wondered what, a- as I recall, there were going to be, um, there was going to be a need for several new positions in order to make that happen. Is that something we're not doing this year?
Right. We, that's not the recommendation right now. Um, in looking at, we would need about seven staff added to the budget to do that. And given that redistricting will happen the year following and some of the staff impacted or that we expect to be impacted at the high school, um, though those positions can be shifted to cover some of the need at the middle school. We felt like it would be maybe not the best timing to do it for next year, but to wait until there was the bigger shift in staffing to move to that. And that's, you know, that's our, Karen and I had that conversation with Michelle Fenimore. Um, it's just, it's a huge budget impact to add seven people.
Yeah. Yeah.
Especially if then we would be looking at potential or likely reductions the year after. It's possible some of the folks that we would hire would then be let go, which is certainly not anything a district wants to knowingly go into. You know, we always want to hire folks with the assumption they'll be with us for a very long time. So, um, so that's our professional recommendation, but.
Uh, that's what I thought as a result of, um, choosing to delay for a year on the redistricting, but I just wanted to ask. Uh, and also really, oh, I'm sorry, member Childs, go ahead.
Well, this is also about potential additions. Is there any way in the foreseeable future that Spanish will be coming back to the middle school?
Um, that's something if the school committee wants to have happen, um, we would just need to, you know, you, as you folks would need to make that decision and if that's what you want, we add the position back and then the middle school would need to, um, build the master schedule around around whatever that would look like. We did talk about that happening in terms of redistricting because of the fact that, um, at the high school, eighth grade does take a language. So there are sections of French and sections of Spanish that are, um, scheduled for our eighth grade. So when eight moves back to the middle school, there'd be a reduction in the number of needed sections at the high school. So we did anticipate that one of our Spanish positions would likely be split between middle school and high school. So I do think, uh, you know, at least when, when we did the big grand movement of staff and, and students, we did project that at least eighth grade we thought would be able to access Spanish. So, um, you know, I think if, if the committee can wait a year, there will be more shifting, um, including Spanish, um, some general music. I believe we anticipated the full-time science and social studies. So I think the middle school schedule is going to be changing pretty dramatically. At least I say this all with projected, anticipated, you know, no guarantees until we actually do that schedule, but it looked like those things would be, would be happening with the redistricting piece. Does that make sense, Sam? I know that's like thousands of moving parts and ifs, thens, but.
That answered my, that answered exactly what I was asking. So it sounds like it's in the same, uh, position as, uh, science and social studies where while we technically could hire for next year, long-term strategically, that would cause more of a headache.
There's, there is potential that it would cause some reductions in staff that we may have just hired. Yes.
Any other questions or discussion about that specific topic?
I think I just had one other thing I wanted to ask about, which was, um, we did discuss the need to have um, on offer some planful, um, social activities to help students who are going to be transitioning to a different school um, next year. And I just, um, wanted to ask if that is included within the anticipated budget.
Not explicitly. Yeah, no, exactly. They, we, we do offer, um, you know, family engagement things like the Sundays, the playing, um, on the playgrounds at all the elementary schools. Part of what the committee will need to talk about, and I expect that, um, at some point in the fairly near future, we'll be trying to schedule a redistricting committee, subcommittee meeting. You know, is the, the full committee will need to make a decision about, all of the students who would be impacted by the redrawn school catchment lines and how the committee would like to do that. If it wants to have everybody just move to the new school based on the newly drawn lines effective September of twenty-five, if you get my years right, or if the committee wants staggered, staggered changes of schools. So that will have a fairly significant impact on the types of activities that we would need to offer. Maybe like, maybe not the type, but the, the volume. So I think that, you know, the subcommittee should meet and then that conversation go to the full committee and then we can be more specific about how we would do any type of, um, orientation to a, a new school. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Is there, um, anything else that you think is important to know about, um, the FY twenty-five budget development?
Andy, was there anything you wanted to make?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of share, I always do every year for everyone. There are set like dates that are kind of key dates for us to keep in mind. In addition to our local dates, as far as when the mayor needs to have our budget and we need to have our hearings and everything, but at, at the state level, I'm more talking about, it's like, we should be hearing next week sometime, uh, if not even this week. Uh, the governor's proposed budget for FY twenty-five, which will include the chapter seventy amounts and the required local contributions that the Commonwealth, uh, will be, uh, providing to cities, towns, regions. So, uh, we'd like to think, I mean, all signs are pointing to that they still will fund the Student Opportunity Act funding, as much as that's great, when you're talking about greenfield is what we say above, an above minimum community. So that in a sense, you know, I'm going to say it's nice, but it just gets absorbed in the total amount that we get. Regardless, so that's, you know, and then that starts the ball rolling of both deliberations amongst House and Senate ways and means, uh, full house and full senate at the state level. Then we have as far as our internal budget development operations is what we call like the April of one move-in date. And those are for the special education students where any student that is on our rolls prior to April one, uh, we are fiscally responsible for. Any student that comes into the district after April one, the district from which they are coming is fiscally responsible unless it's an out-of-state. But those are kind of the key components. So we've built these budgets, uh, like in special education regarding our tuitions. We do have some, like a contingency built in place. But we've also done things like factored in the increase in the tuition rate set by the state for those seven sixty-six programs. So just, uh, you know, as far as this is, as much as it might not seem, but we are actually still early in the process. Admittedly, it's a, can be a pretty fast process, but it's, it is still early. So I just wanted to share those as, uh, some key timelines at the state level that we are running parallel with.
Speaking of the increase in the, um, chapter seven sixty-six, which is specialized private schools uh, for special education. Um, did Greenfields see, um, anything from the supplemental budget, um, that?
We did not reach the, we did not reach the threshold to see any amount above.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Karen, is there anything else about the budget for next year that the committee needs to know about that I didn't think of?
No, I was just thinking in terms of curriculum and a, a lot of the grants are ending. So I just think we need to be consciously aware that to continue our high-quality instructional materials, um, unless Desi rolls out some new and exciting grants to continue the support of that, we will have to move that money into the local to support that moving forward.
To purchase ongoing materials?
Correct.
So when, when the superintendent budget comes out, you will see that impact?
Okay. Anything else, uh, for discussion or additional questions? All right, with that, I will move to adjourn. Can I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion on adjourning? All right, then, uh, I say yes. Member Childs?
Yes.
Uh, Secretary Janine?
Yes.
We are adjourned at twelve forty-four PM. Thank you, everyone.
Wonderful. Thank you.